The call is meeting the order, please stand before the leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now a moment of silence for the families affected by today's fire on Edison Avenue, please. Thank you, please have a seat. If you have a phone, please turn on vibrate, silent, or cut it off so we don't make any noise when we reach. And executive sessions for personnel matters were held October 1st, October 5th, and tonight prior to the council meeting October 8th. I'm presenting council and city... Roll call, please.
Carl Lovic?
Here.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Easter?
Alright, now I'm presenting the City of Sunbury in council residence proclamation declaring the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas all people, female or male, are born with some breast cells and tissue, and one in eight women and one in a thousand men will be diagnosed with breast cancer in their lifetime. And whereas a yearly estimate of over 252,710 women and 2,470 men in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer and more than 40,500 women and 460 men will die annually. And whereas through research and advocacy, advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including significant decreases mortality, with currently more than 3 million breast cancer survivors in the United States. And whereas I encourage all to be proactive in the crusade against this deadly disease because early stages of breast cancer often have few or no noticeable symptoms, making detection through breast self-examination and regular mammograms key to successful management and treatment. And whereas we as a society must acknowledge the need for continuing education and awareness which remains vital to help bring to an end breast cancer mortality among all people, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Kurt Pearlbridge, being Mayor of the City of Sunbury, County of Northumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the City of Sunbury council members and citizens, do hereby declare the month of October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I make a motion to accept this proclamation.
I'll second.
Easter?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Carl?
Lovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Officer Earl Johnson? Alright, raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Earl Johnson,
I, Earl Johnson.
Do solemnly swear that I will support,
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
obey and defend the Constitution,
Obey and defend the Constitution.
of the United States and the Constitution,
Of the United States and the Constitution.
of the Commonwealth,
Of the Commonwealth.
and that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you.
Just to give everybody a little background on Mr. Johnson, he has prior police experience. He's worked with the Capitol Police down in Harrisburg. Had a few part-time jobs at other places, but we started this process in August. And we're here in the first week of October, so that's how long the process takes. We had two candidates. One candidate took a job somewhere else, but Earl was left and he was gonna be, got a job and we welcomed him aboard and we look forward to him. Working the streets and meeting everybody. He's a great guy, his family's back there, wonderful kids, his mom, his wife is back there. So if you get a chance to see him out on the street, he'll be out on the street, probably in uniform, hopefully by the end of the month. But a lot of paperwork and office stuff to do right now, but I'm looking forward to Mr. Johnson working with us and it's gonna be a good time.
Alright, Mr. Melville Stevens Jr.? Our third Assistant Fire Chief? Please raise your right hand. I, Malcolm O. Stevens Jr.,
I, Malcolm O. Stevens Jr.
Do solemnly swear that I will support,
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
obey and defend the Constitution,
Obey and defend the Constitution.
of the United States and the Constitution, of the Commonwealth,
Of the Commonwealth.
and that I will discharge,
And that I will discharge.
the duties of my office with fidelity. The duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you. I'll make a motion to accept the approval of the minutes and reports for September 10, 2018, and the reports of the Police Department, Engineer, Code Office, Health Department, Police Pension Board, Second Quarter Minutes, and the Planning Commission.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Are there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time? Just so y'all know, the vacant property ordinance, the second reading is pushed back to the next council meeting. I make a motion to accept the second repeal of our current city administrative ordinance, Chapter 28, Article 13, and the second reading to replace it with the new city administrative ordinance that is implying with the Third Class City Code. Right, second?
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Easter?
Carl Lovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Chestnut Street update?
There are only west two blocks and chestnuts street going sidewalk and curb on the north side. We set some street lights this week. And I'm sure they'll finish up, but there's multiple areas currently.
Alright, so after review and in consideration of the concerns and comments from our community, I'm asking council to accept the following changes to the vacant property ordinance that I'm proposing. Under the actively for sale or lease definition, I would like to include or other proper advertising methods for actively for sale or leasing of a building under registration. Under the definition of inspection, I would like to include the word "and" between located inside and outside the structure thereon. Under the definition of occupied, I'd like to include or change it to any building or structure where one or more persons conducts a lawful business resides in or lives in all or any part of the building or structure. That takes care of apartment building complexes where say it's a five-unit apartment and two units are rented, there's somebody living in the building now. Vacant definition, I would like to change it to or lawfully resides in or lives in all or any part of the building for the vacant definition. And instead of being 60 days empty, I would like to change it to 90 days empty to make it deemed vacant. Under the applicability, on page 5, I'd like to change 132-3A, the requirements of this ordinance shall be applicable to each owner, mortgager, responsible party, or local agent of any property that is vacant within the City of Sunbury. Under 132-3 applicability, C, I would like to remove the sentence that says "and" shall be required whenever a property has remained vacant for 90 consecutive days or more. Because the word vacant is used in this paragraph and the definition of vacant is already in here. Under Section 132-4 Annual Registration Statement, I would like, in A, I would like to remove a portion that says "as" here in described. Because after consideration of comments, I'm removing, asking to remove 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 10. And only including, and only including 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12. Do y'all, do y'all like me to read that?
Please.
Removal 1, if the owner is a corporation, the registration statement shall provide the names and residence, residence address of all officers and directors of the corporation shall be accompanied by a copy of the most recent annual franchise tax report filed with the Deputy Secretary of State. 2, if an estate, the name and business address of the executor of the estate. 3, if a trust, the name and address of all trustees, grantors, and beneficiaries. 4, if a partnership, the names and residence addresses of all partners with an interest of 10% or greater. 5, if any other form of unincorporated association, the names and residence addresses of all principals with an interest of 10% or greater. 6, if an individual person, the name and residence address of that individual person. 10, relative to any changes in the status of herein reference registration information, it shall not be the responsibility of the owner, mortgagee, responsible party, and/or agent for said property. Advise the City Code Administration Office of the same in writing within 30 days of the occurrence of such change. I would like to keep 7, in no instance shall the registration of a vacant property and payment of registration fees be construed. To exonerate the owner, agent, or responsible party from responsibility for compliance with any other codes or other applicable requirements of law. 8, one registration statement must be filed for each vacant property that the owner is registering. 9, if the status of the registration information changes during the course of any calendar year, it is the responsibility of the owner, responsible party, and/or agent for the same to contact the City Code Administration Office within 30 days of the occurrence of such change and advise the City in writing of those changes. 11, properties subject to this annual registration section shall remain under the annual registration requirement as well as the annual inspection requirement and all security and or maintenance standards of this ordinance for so long as they remain vacant or otherwise in default provisions thereof. 12, each property registered here under shall also include in its registration documentation proof of fire insurance, including a carrier relative thereto. So I would like to change B, local agent, to if not, to match a current ordinance that we already have regarding rental properties to match it. And the local agent, I'm asking to be, if none of the persons listed on the registration statement are a full-time resident of City of Sunbury and/or who does not live within 25 miles of the boundary of the City of Sunbury, a local agent shall be designated who shall reside in an area within 25 miles of the City of Sunbury. The local agent shall be the agent of the owner for service of process in receiving own notices and demands as well as for performing the obligations of the owner under this chapter. The identity, address, and telephone numbers of a person who is designated as a local agent hereunder shall be provided by the owner to the city, including the vacant property registration. And such information shall be kept current and updated as it changes. Section C, annual registration fee schedule, I would like to remove the sentence that says "further." All registration fees must be paid directly by the owner or other specifically responsible party as third-party pay no registration fees will not be accepted absent the specific consent of the city or an and/or authorized designate. I'd just like to include the word "property" under single-family residence property for the fee scheduling. I'd like to include the word "property" for the duplex property under the fee schedule. D, inspection, I would like to change it to the owner or responsible party of a property that has been registered for one year and remains vacant shall include an inspection by the City Code Administration Office within 30 days. For each year thereafter that a property remains vacant, the owner or responsible party shall schedule an inspection by the City Code Administration Office, annual inspections, to monitor the conditions and safety of the property. This changes it so when, if you come in, you register a vacant property, there is no longer an inspection 30 days after registry unless the property has been registered for a minimum of one year. After it has been registered and vacant one year, then you will have annual safety inspections of the property. F, penalties, I would like to change it to if the owner of a vacant property fails to register and/or make payments for registration fees to the City, penalty in the amount of $100 per property will be assessed every 30 days. Prior, it was monthly. I like to make it more simple, 30, give it a date number. G, posting a property, I would like to remove the words professionally created and from the opposite side, side of the roadway, and change it to all registered vacant properties shall be posted with a sign no smaller than 8 inches by 12 inches, which I have lowered the size or size of the sign requirement. Title or labeled as emergency contact indicating the emergency 24-hour contact telephone number of the owner or local agent of the property. Said sign shall be placed in plain view from the sidewalk or roadway and must be legible. That changes it so you don't have to have a professionally created sign, a large sign, I believe it was 18 by something else prior. And it no longer is a name and address and phone number. Right now it's just a 24-hour emergency contact number in case something happens on a smaller sign. Properties, H, properties posted for sale, for lease, or for rent, all registered vacant properties that are for sale, for lease, for rent shall be posted. Said signs shall be no smaller than 8 inches by 12 inches wide, indicating the contact number of the responsible party and shall be placed in plain view from the sidewalk or roadway and must be legible. I want to remove the sentence that says "from the opposite sidewalk, sidewalk, side of the roadway." 132-5 waiver, A, continuous waiver for military personnel, changing the title. A continuous waiver of all the registration fee and inspections shall be granted by the City Code Administration Office to all currently deployed U.S. military personnel for the period of the deployment if the subject property meets the criteria set forth in Section 5D3 herein, which I'll explain later. B, waiver due to extenuating circumstances. The waivers shall be valid for a time period not to exceed March 15 of each calendar year for properties already registered under this ordinance or not exceed March 15 of the following calendar year of a non-registered property becoming vacant in any calendar year. It matches it with the fee payment schedule and the time period set up. Upon recommendation of the City Code Administration Office, the city council may take into consideration any extenuating circumstances which may exist or arise relevant to a vacant property and may waive at a public meeting by majority vote all or any part of the fees and/or inspection required by this ordinance for a period of time as city council may see fit under said circumstances. C, waiver for nonprofit. The waiver shall be valid for a time period not to exceed March 15 of each calendar year for properties already registered under this ordinance or not exceed March 15 of the following calendar year of a non-registered property becoming vacant in any calendar year. A waiver of the registration fee shall be granted by the City Code Administration Office if the owner meets the criteria for a nonprofit organization as defined by Section 501(c)(3) of the IRS Code and the subject property meets the criteria set forth in Section 5D3 herein. Section 5, compliant property waiver, the waiver shall be valid for a time period not to exceed March 15 of each calendar year for properties already registered under this ordinance or not exceed March 15 of the following calendar year for of a non-registered property becoming vacant in any calendar year. And then everything's the same. And then under that D, compliant property waiver, I'm including subsection 5D3, which would be subject property meets the criteria set forth in 5D3 herein. And 5D3 herein is complies with the requirements of City of Sunbury Code, Chapter 130, subsection 130-1, and the International Property Maintenance Code as cited therein. That basically says your property is up to code, there's no violations against your property. 132-6 maintenance requirements, I would like to include the word grass. Properties subject to this ordinance shall be kept free of weeds, overgrown brush, grass, dead vegetation, trash, trunk, junk, debris, accumulation of circulars, flyers, and/or notices, and/or discarded personality. Personality is personal items such as furniture, shoes, anything that someone could own. And means all requirements of Sunbury City Code, including but not limited to Sunbury City Code subsection 130-1. Section 132-7 security requirements, Section C. In additions to other penalties, any property owner or responsible party who violates the provisions regarding maintenance and security and all other provisions and or requirements of this ordinance shall be cited and may be fined by the district judge in the amount of up to $500 per violation per day. It's up to the district judge for that. And I make a motion to accept these amendments. I make a motion to accept these changes. Do I have a second? Yes. And this will be, I'll just make this a first reading, gives everybody 20 days to review it again.
Yeah, it's good because it takes 20 days to catch up with what you were saying.
So do I have a second to the motion to accept these amendments? Yes, no, maybe?
No.
That's a first reading. No, it's a first reading because there's so many drastic changes to this.
We're saying if we made more changes between...
Alright, I've contacted Allentown. Allentown, it definitely does help the community. It's like the broken window effect. This helps correct other problems caused by vacancy. Altuna. It's helping property owners get permits for rehabilitation of the properties or to sell the properties. It makes people responsible for their properties and to get properties moving, and it has worked. Ashley Burrow. Vacant properties are slowly becoming occupied. It definitely works. Baldwin Burrow. Found that they have more empty properties than originally knew of. Helps with getting the vacant properties to be more maintained. Back Pennsylvania. It's holding property owners more leverage for their empty buildings. Those are just a few off of the list. Do I have a second to accept this first reading of the ordinance that will help drastically move the City of Sunbury? No, not at this time. You can wait until the open conversation, ma'am. Alright, as noted, thank you, council. Let's move on. New business. Councilman Easter.
Oh, I have an invoice for the WTA wall CES engineering invoice 180315 for the amount of $3,896.01. Kevin, will we pay off the rent which we received?
We received? I don't know if they're, I didn't see anything on an email or a bank account.
That's what the message will be coming from. He room vacation.
Yeah, that's what they're there. Check them out.
I'll make that for a motion.
Kramer?
Yes.
Carl Lovic?
Yeah.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
And just so the public are aware, even though there was no second to my motion, I will allow a copy of this proposed amendment and the entire copy of the ordinance available at the City Clerk's office for the public to view. And so you can comment at the next meeting or voice your concern in the City Clerk's office, please. I've received an application from Douglas Vanderpool of Northumberland to be a part-time officer in our Sunbury Police Department. Officer Vanderpool is a retired Army veteran and has over 15 years of law enforcement experience. I make a motion to accept Officer Vanderpool effective immediately to be placed on our part-time list and to be used as needed at a pay of $20 an hour. Do I have a second?
Second.
Easter?
Yes.
Carl Lovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Councilwoman Kramer approved the approval of pay invoices.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the invoices from the general fund of $16,030.91. And from the upward pool of $2,648.08, we have the money to pay these bills at this time.
Second.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Yes.
Carl Lovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Tax exoneration, Councilwoman Kramer.
Tax exoneration, that's okay. Tax exoneration. There are five people on the list, deceased, paying duplicate bills in the amount $628.95, and make a motion to exonerate these people.
Second.
Rechner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Easter?
Carl Lovic?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Alright. Alright, now we're open to public discussion. If anyone has a comment at this time, please raise your hand. Is there any public comment at this time? Approve the podium, state your name.
John Shipman. The $16,030 from the, from the general fund, does that include all expenses that have come in or is that only what we can afford?
That's only what we can afford. John, we did everything else till the next account payable and held off to that date.
Okay.
So we get some money covered. So we paid everything we could do, nothing behind. We leave the 24th on, we're holding for the next meeting.
Okay.
And that should be 130, 140,000 for next calendar year.
Okay, thank you.
Amy Buener, regarding the vacant property registration proposal. My thought is that perhaps if we look at the residential plight that has been identified and addressed with the Redevelopment Authority, work with Sunbury's revitalization, possibly with the Chamber of Commerce and some surrounding communities, much like you said, there are other communities that are finding some benefit to similarities in the ordinance as proposed. Perhaps we can find some common ground with what's already working on the residential side if there's some legal standing to be able to do the same on the commercial side, implementing inspections so that we're carefully identifying unsafe blight as opposed to being a perception that it's across the board with vacancies. A couple of things that I've noticed in doing real estate marketing, oftentimes signage is not where your leasing and sales are promoted and generated. So there might be something that gets a little more closely looked at as well as it does create some hesitation for me when looking at emergency contacts, understanding we need ways to be able to contact these property owners or people that are taking care of properties. If we look at the state of affairs as it is, there will be a lot of signs with a lot of phone numbers creating a poor public perception from outsiders coming in and potentially investing in the community. It also does create a little hesitation on my part as we look at the community and, you know, I myself have been reaching out to people from outside, trying to get them to come in and invest, not necessarily, you know, small business owners. It makes it very difficult and challenging for them financially, so if we can find investors that come in and are able to obtain some of the buildings, make some renovations, improve the buildings, and then lease, then, you know, we're, we're in the right direction. But if we have something like this, it could be very prohibitive to outside people coming in and investing in the community.
Okay, thank you, Congress. Anyone else have a comment tonight? Please stand. Approve the podium, state your name, please.
I'm just a little concerned that this was a first reading and although I agree a lot with what Amy Buener had just said, I do feel like the signs would be more of a positive than a negative at this point. I think that the perception of what people have and a poor perception would be more about the dilapidated state of the buildings that we have than the itty-bitty sign that might be there telling us who's responsible or who to call when there's something that needs to be done. I'm really just, I'm shocked and I want to know why that our council doesn't want to move forward. If he's given us other communities, just a few of all the communities that he said this has worked for and it has been a, there's been a positive effect. I want to know as a taxpayer, what is your excuse for holding us back from moving forward? I want to know as a taxpayer, what is your excuse for holding us back from moving forward? I just want to know. I want to know why. It's not, we're not giving, we're not given, this isn't even a second motion, this is our first motion. I just, I want to know why we're not even entertaining the thought.
Well, I mean, for me, I don't, I mean, I've said all along, I agree with the idea of this and I agree with the need we needed to do this. For me, there's still a couple of things that I want to sit down and address that I've talked to different people about that I'm just not ready to do another first reading and then make another changes and then do another first reading. I'd rather keep looking at this, keep fixing and making it better, and then when we feel like it's right, then come back with a first reading.
And just, and to help everyone out here, the making this a first reading was my idea. I spoke with the city solicitor and I was informed that we would not need to do another first reading because the overall changes are not that drastic. That changes the subject of the actual ordinance. And actually, the changes are to give more room to the property owners.
And I get that Mr. Reese or Attorney Reese is not on the person council, but I think we can all agree in this room and in this community that he's, his opinion is very well valued with a lot of us. And if he can agree that this could be something that would potentially be beneficial to our community, I think the rest of us can look into what, if we don't foresee what Kurt might see for the future for our community, I think we should look at what Joel Neum or Joel Reese has to say.
Well, first of all, Deborah, I've been talking to other people, property owners, and some of my concerns are, they have concerns. So instead of, like Chris said, rushing into this, should be more time spent and go over instead of reading it or reading change or change, let's do it right the first time.
At least we're being proactive and not just taking the ordinance.
So why don't we, so is this still all on the table? Are you going to still talk about it? Is it going to be shoved to the, to the back, you know, for three, six months from now? Are you guys going to come weekly? Can you, can you give us some kind of hope that you're going to help us change and make things better and not just stay the same? Can you promise the people in this community that you're going to sit in a closed session every week until you come up with something for us?
I don't think we can say closed session, talk about this.
Do you answer that, Mrs. Betts? The only time that I can get council to discuss this is on the agenda at our public meetings.
Then I guess we have to keep going up and do the first ordinance every, I mean, do we call the first reading every time or how does that work? I mean, do we just keep reading it every week until everybody comes to an agreement?
No, longer discussion, right.
But this ordinance, it's completely different than how we, the council has proposed prior ordinances for the city because it's not just grabbing ordinance from one community, taking their name off and then slapping Sunbury on and then just throwing it out here without adequate research and review of it. This one has been researched and reviewed since at least February. Multiple, multiple municipalities having contacts throughout the state of Pennsylvania and all council has been kept up to date regarding changes.
And it appears to me, and I assume some of us, that you're trying and you're willing to adapt the amendment so that it is working with, you know, landowners and people in the community with the city council, but we need to have you support one another to get something moving because it's not working the way we're at now. It's not working.
My end of the situation I have, and I'm going to use you as an example because you're up. You have a rental that's empty.
No.
I'm saying if you...
We have one that's being worked on.
Hypothetically, you have a rental that's empty, okay? It's a rental, so you still pay $50 a year, as expected. According to this, you're going to pay another 50 because it's empty. And I could go...
No, we wouldn't. We have to apply.
Okay.
We have to, no, 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 please let me speak because you just brought that up. If I am making an effort to improve the quality of my community by making sure that that place is going to get more rent because it looks better, it's more, it's run more efficiently for the tenant, I don't mind paying $50 and I wouldn't mind paying another $50 if I have to. But, but if I'm told that I can go down and have that fee waived because I'm working on it, then I'm fine with that. I'll be happy to go down and do the paperwork. I'll be happy to do the paperwork because I'm doing something good for the community to stop the landlords and the, and the commercial property owners from doing the wrong thing. So I'm okay. That's my part as a community taxpaying person. It's my responsibility to make sure I'm doing my part so that the people that need to be held accountable are held accountable.
And again, I'm asking for the inspection that is no longer when you register a property within 30 days. It is if a property is vacant consecutive for one entire year, then you would have an annual inspection for safety concerns of the property.
And Rick, I, I got to tell you, I feel like you're instilling some kind of fear in the community that, you know, you're going to be fined, you're going to be fined. That's not what's happening. And you being one city council, I know you're smarter than that. So what is your point of trying to manipulate everybody's thought process? Because that's what concerns me.
No, because if we, we cannot double charge fees and we're trying...
You're not there with charging fees. If I go to you, if you come in and taking another $50 fee because your place is a brandish and I have the opportunity to waive those rights, I'm going to go, I'm going to spill out my paperwork and if I'm abiding by the rules, which are very, very lax even in this kind of ordinance, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with doing my part so that the person who isn't taking care of the property is being held accountable because I'm working my butt off to do this thing.
And Councilman Rechner, it wouldn't be double-dipping because the rental properties, you get the inspection if you have a permit to rental properties, correct? Yes, okay. So vacant property, if it's vacant for a year, most likely they don't have a rental permit from the city of Sunbury, so therefore if it's empty for one entire year...
Mr. Walberg, do you have a rental policy, renter for your property?
Kurt, does he want to say?
No, I'm just saying, it's, it's just this, and the other thing is, is I want to check with the district magistrate because what we're told we can charge for fines are different than what he has on that paper.
You know what? I love that you're going to do it though. Stop telling us you're going to do it and start doing it. Come to the table next week or two weeks and tell us what was said. Do it. Stop telling us what needs to be done and just do it and come to the table so we can move forward. Can we do that?
One minute.
All right, two weeks. I'm going to ask you if you went and talked to the doc, the judge about that. Thank you.
Mark Walberg, I guess, I'm title of the local landlord and just to let people know, I just sent my tax checks in. You're going to be getting for me school, which I bought, and I think I'm paying $7,000 plus to the community on a building that I paid $120,000 for, which I haven't argued the value because I figure it helps with the coffers. And the stone castle, which I paid $40,000, I'm paying, I think, excess of $5,000 taxes on that, which I bought for $40,000. So I'm just letting you know that, you know, the money does come in from people that invest in the community. And I'd like to thank the council for, for not moving this forward because obviously there's other ways, in my opinion, to work through the code office, which is established already, to, to take care of the grass, the snow. And I hope that I'm not being singled out by the mayor on, I got a call from the code office on two cracked windows that I have on my school, which you can only see from the side and no kids ever play there, but the code office came out, which I'll get fixed. But also another property owner who I won't mention also, I think, got singled out by potentially you. And I'm just saying, you know...
And just to stop you right there, not to stop your, your public comment, but I'm, I would say, in my opinion, I'm one of the few members of this council that does not single a single person in the city out.
That's good then.
Everyone be treated to the same exact standards.
So just to mention...
If I had a busted window in, on my mole, I would hope somebody would call on it.
If you, I appreciate that. So just drive down this alley as you go down and look to the left, there's, I think, 28 broken windows. You'll see right down the alley. So if mine on the side that they could barely spot...
They can see from 4th Street, I believe. I, I do believe I know what windows you're talking about.
I'm sure you do.
Yes. So, okay, so since I saw in the...
So now I'm just giving you a...
I would drive you past South 4th Street or North 4th Street. Go past Mr. Walberg's empty Edison School property. I took notice that there was a window that was busted out. And every day, the kids are waiting at that corner there on Fort, I don't know what the cross-section is, but it's at the Edison School.
It seems like a direct attack on me.
Students are waiting and they're running around and playing in that yard wall.
Well, don't worry, we're going to have, like your house with the no trespassing signs, I think you have 28 of them around your property now.
Because people keep coming to my property.
Don't worry. It's going to be the same at the school. So the kids can stay on the side and what's good for the goose is good for the game. But now, my only final thing is thank you guys for not moving it forward. And please drive down the alley tomorrow. There should be 27 windows out right, right where you go. Look, just look to the left as you go down this street and you don't have to look as hard as you did to see mine because Mike could barely find it, but you'll see these quite obviously. So, you know, you should get a call too.
Okay. Thank you.
That's all.
Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Savage. I'm, I'm not necessarily sure that this is a comment regarding the new ordinance. My question and comment is more kind of on the other side of where, what we're looking at with the vacant buildings. I think the underlying problem is that we have so many vacant buildings. About six months ago, I stood up and asked what the council of the city was doing to further, further develop the city economically. Since then, there's been a nationally recognized economist come to our area who has largely echoed what we had talked about before. Frankly, I've spoken with, I think, four or five of you sitting here about it. We're a perfect logistical hub. We're in the proximity of Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, New York, Baltimore. Frankly, our city is, I think, a perfect shipping zone. If you already look at what goes out around here, you have Fermins and Rehberlin, the access to the highway, you have Artech's tile mills, you have several empty factories, not factories, but several empty buildings up at the end of 4th Street I can just think of. Whether they're privately owned or not, it's not a concern of mine. I just want to know what we're doing about some of the vacant space. I think if we can attract more business owners here, if they see a value, they're going to improve the buildings. Frankly, I don't mean to offend any of you. I think a lot of the going back and forth is part of the political process, but I think it's largely hurting our image. Mr. Mayor, if this was a second reading or first reading, I think that we should have the time to go over these things, but I think that council should also work with the mayor on getting our reading through. So whether the ordinance is going to go through or not, I'd just rather see it being worked on in general. The other thing I was going to use as an example is if you look at Snyder County, again, another much less populated area than ours, and they have kind of harnessed in on their woodworking, on their mobile home manufacturing, I can name at least five multi-hundred employers that are over there. So I just, I just would rather see the ordinance focus on, maybe not the specific ordinance as I said, but more economic development rather than squeezing just the buildings. I mean, the buildings are an issue. I'm not arguing that. I agree with that. But what I think we need is more economic development to attract investors, kind of like a, a lot of people echoed already. So that's my concern is I think we need to do more economically to attract people. And I would echo Amy's point too. You know, you have the organizations such as SRI, the Redevelopment Authority, the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know what the missing link is, but I think that many of us that sit on those committees are willing to work with the city and, and do some of the labor and the personal helping that it's going to take to, you know, either attract these businesses or, or do something. So again, that's my issue and I, I've got to offer my time to, to anybody that I can on committees or otherwise.
Any other audience comments at this time? All right. Announcements. I am still accepting volunteers for a shade tree commission to fill two vacancies. Please send a letter of interest to Mayor Carl Lovich at 225 Market Street, Sunbury, 817801, that they must, you must have the knowledge and education of trees. A special Halloween trick-or-treat event will be held on Wednesday, October 31st from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. It will be located on the first floor here in City Hall. It is open to the children and to the general public for trick-or-treating and information gather. The Sunbury City Code, City Treasurer, and City Clerk's Office will be participating as well as Rehberlin County Children and Youth, Area Agency on Aging, Behavioral Health, Drug and Alcohol, the Sheriff Department, Sunbury YMCA, and the Dagenston Community Library and other great organizations. This event is to help build a better community understanding and to provide information to the public and to help the public meet the different organizations that are here. Each organization will have information regarding what is offered and how they help the community and will be available to answer general questions. The public is welcome to come meet these organizations and children are welcome to come dressed up and participate in trick-or-treating here at City Hall. The Sunbury Fire Police Halloween Parade is Thursday, October 18th at 7:00 p.m. Trick-or-treating in Sunbury is Wednesday, October 31st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. or 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. Public meetings for the sole purpose for council members to discuss the 2019 budget are scheduled on the following dates, October 15th and October 29th at 2:00 p.m. in the first floor conference room here in City Hall. The next city council meeting is October 22 at 6:15 p.m. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Please get your budgets as soon as possible so we can...
You should have my budget at least.